All us to order.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's call us to order at seven oh one. Welcome everyone and Jay. And Angela as guests, welcome guests. Um, my only comment is that the we have a request from the from the Board of Trustees that we schedule our joint meeting of the two boards from we reschedule it from the end of August to the beginning of September. Because the last of the of the board meetings is going to be totally devoted, the last of the pristine meetings can be totally devoted to Community Day, which follows immediately thereafter, and they felt that that whole time period wasn't really good. So I said, okay, but that we hoped it would be within the first two weeks of September and that we did not want this to go beyond that. So for those of you who are holding that week open, you may close it or do something more fun. MJ, this is a proposed joint meeting of the trustees and the planning board to discuss Fjord Trail. So as soon as we know the date of that, you'll be informed with that. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, okay, um, I'm gonna move. I'm not sure anyone had the the time to read the minutes of the last meeting and I just soon move on to the business part of the meeting. So with your permission, we'll put off the approval of those minutes until the next meeting.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. Um, are there any comments from any reports from the board members?
Uh, I don't know if you read the the current, the newspaper. Uh, there was one uh on the editor's page, the Phillips Town Trail. There is some comments on that. Um, but we can, we can discuss that later. That's
We can, we can discuss that later if you like.
Yeah, that's kind of interesting. Well, it's kind of connected to us in a
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, and let me see, I always hard mine. Oh, um, just one comment also on the, oh, all right, correspondence. Um, I'm just gonna move on to that. We did receive today at four thirty quite a long email from the trustees. Uh, regarding the traffic study that is being undertaken by Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail. But um, it was at four thirty and I didn't have time to really peruse it at the time. So, but we will discuss it later in the meeting as well. Okay? Um, and just a note Karen, and we've got to sort of restructure the these agendas because we have eleven Main Street under old business. It's actually new business, but I I would like it to come first. And then Chestnut Street and the Fjord Trail presentation questions are actually old business. So hey, however, we can do that in future. Let's try and do it. Okay? My oversight not uh bringing it your attention sooner. Okay, so um, let's move on. We have an application before us referred to us regarding eleven Main Street, which is at the river side of the railroad tracks on Main Street and the owner of the property. Angela Lakin is with us tonight. Angela, why don't you explain to us what your app, what what you're applying for? Yeah.
The
Oh, you
Need to unmute Angela.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, this is my first time doing a Zoom, so.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so um, I bought it from uh eleven Main Street LLC and they had gotten a special um use approval and they were using as their office for um some kind of hospice advisory thing. So I bought it. Um, we closed on July first and I want to use it for retail. Um, I, they had done redone everything there already, which was wonderful, including um the parking lot, which is, you know, an actual lot that could be used for various things. But so they had a parking lot put in um according to the town and planning board's specifications. And they redid the whole inside. They put a lot of money into it. When COVID hit, they started working from home and then realized, hey, we don't need to own this building, you know? So um, all that's already done and in place and approved and signed off on. I don't need to do anything. I'm not asking to change anything um except to go to a permitted use of retail. On that note, it just so happens that my very good friends who have a retail store for many years in Cold Spring, you guys probably know them. Um, it was Elliot, but he passed away a year and a half ago. So Mary and Bobby, they're at eighty-one Main Street, right next to the municipal building. Um, their retail store there, they want to move in. Their lease is up August thirty-first and the building is under contract for sale. And they're just waiting. That building is, the owners are Knights of Columbus. They're just waiting for the closing date. But so they're good through August thirty-first on their lease. And it just so happened um with everything was we're good friends. I spent a lot of time in Cold Spring since I've been here for about six years. And and um, so we're excited about that because we're good friends already and I've spent a lot of time in their store. And um, so they have three people together. It's the two partners, Bobby and Mary, and then they have part-time help, which usually fills in for one of them, but under the assumption that they're all three working in the store, three party spaces, and I have the twenty-five hundred foot parking lot, which has more spaces than that. So it'd be the three owners would be parking there. And for years, they've been parking on the street. So that's also a good note. Another reason that um I obviously would never change the parking lot into something else because it's good to have. Um, uh, Bobby also is a resident in Cold Spring now, has been for a few months, maybe a little longer. Um, I don't know if you know them, but um, they're, they're all set to move in. I mean, they want to sign a lease um and all that. Beyond that, I don't know what else I need to say. You guys would kind of have to let me know. I've never done this actual thing before, so I I'm not sure.
Okay, um, questions from from the members? No questions?
Well, I just have one question. I'm sure others do too. Being that I'm one of the newer members of the planning board, maybe this is, maybe this exists and I just didn't see it, but um, when I was looking over the material, what I didn't see is um either a site plan or some kind of floor plan about the future intended use for retail, like to get an idea of, you know, what's the retail and how is the space going to be used for retail? I also didn't get a sense of total square footage that's going to be retail versus not. Um, so I did have just have those questions.
Should I respond to that?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I included, I I made um actual where I had them all in order, the order of things in the transferring to you guys kind of got a little mixed up instead of being in, and then the color, the they were, the pictures were in black and white, so you couldn't even see the actual photographs. Right. And then they submitted those. So I know that yours, because when I got the email, is not in the order that I had the presentation. I worked so long and hard and there's, these are down at the office as well. Um, so yes, I do have the um each floor drawn out with the square footage. The usable square footage, not the stairs included in there. And um, then I have a picture of each floor and since they're a little out of order, uh, what I did was I have a picture of the front of the building with the front door. And then I, then I had um a a picture of a parking diagram that they had had drawn up by an environmental engineer. Just to give you the idea of, you know, I mean, it's a no-brainer to park three cars, but um, and then there's a picture, I noticed it was labeled alley. That is the parking lot. Um, you can see my Bronco in that. Um, so I started with the back and then I put a picture of the backyard. It actually has a nice backyard and it shows the back door. Oh. Am I still with you guys?
Yes.
I think we're ready to look at it. Maybe like someone sharing their screen.
Okay, um, and then opening the back door is a picture of the kitchen. Um, there is no stove in the kitchen and my friends do not need a stove, so I'm not putting stove in. There's the sink and the fridge and, you know, they'll have a microwave in there. So with the first floor, with the picture of the kitchen, I had a picture of the first floor. Um, it is a, uh, uh, with the kitchen and then the main floor. It's all open floor plans. They had redone the whole thing. I'm, I'm only gonna have the one lease of my friends that are partners. Um, they are going to use all, they had originally had two shops in Cold Spring and then COVID hit and her husband Elliot, who was my very good friend, got sick with cancer. So they combined into one. So they're kind of cramped in there now. Now they'll be able to use we've, they've been in there with me many times. They have it all planned out. So excited because now they, their space will be nicely used. So uh, the kitchen and then I, there was a picture of the first floor. That one has my little lawn chair in there for when I sit down and take a break from cleaning. And um, and um, it has the, there's a view of the front door from inside. And then I had a picture of the second floor, the drawing with the measurements. There's a half bath on the first and third floor and a full bath on the second floor. There's a bathroom on every floor. Um, then I had a, a photograph of the second floor and you can see that it's all open. You know, they had done all that work. And then the third floor is a half floor. Um, so it's half, half the amount of space approximately, which I put the measurements uh down on that as well. And then I put a picture of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not gonna have, yeah, I'm not gonna split it up and have two different stores in there because in my opinion, um, I like, some things are more important than getting the maximum amount of money. I mean, we want to do it nicely and have it simple and um, you know, enjoy it at the same time.
Right. So thank you so much for going through that. So the reason I was kind of asking about square footage and and maybe also even wanting to know like number of employees and stuff is because I didn't see a parking table in the the list of material. And you you just mentioned, which was news to me, that there's a picture of the alley and the alley is going to be the place
But that, but that, but it's not an alley. Somebody labeled it as an alley. It is an actual parking lot that was done by the previous owners after getting the instructions and the way it had to be done with the grading and everything. It's been a, it's been an actual parking lot for twelve plus years and it's in, and it's in real good shape. Um, it just got labeled as an alley because everything was out of order when you guys got it. Yeah. So you couldn't see that that was, there was a picture of the parking table and then a picture of the parking lot, but you guys got everything all scrambled when it was sent to you.
Oh, okay. So the parking tables, I just didn't see it. Okay.
Yeah, so that's in there as well.
Okay.
Also, there is a parking table. I'm sorry, where is the parking table?
Yeah, so I'm not sure in yours now, but it's in there. Um, oh, under yours, you guys had it under site plan, that category.
Oh, on, oh, on, oh, on our website.
On your, on yours, yeah. Um, so yeah, it's one that an environmental engineer did for the previous owners. It
Okay.
When they, when they
Oh, well, that was, that's the parking lot. That's a diagram of the parking lot, not the parking table, right?
Oh, I, oh, what is the parking table? What do you, I don't know what you mean.
What, what, what Yasmin was asking was to figure out the parking and so the parking is all kind of, is all done by formulas. So
No, no, that, there is a drawing of that that I submitted.
Well, it, it wouldn't be a drawing. It would basically just be like a table or just, you know, just, it looks like the floor plates are roughly five hundred and ten square feet, the first two, and then the top one is two hundred and seventy-two. So the first floor is
Oh, right, right.
One parking space per hundred and fifty. The upper floors are one per three hundred. So it seems like, seems like you're roughly
No, no, I, I, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it seems like it calculates out about six spaces. It's surprising, but I mean, they're very small floor plates.
Right, so um, the um, right, they had already gotten all that approved, the previous owner. In other words, the parking lot was already signed off on and done according to the town. Um, uh, and all that, when they did the renovations, all that got done at the same time. So I mean, it, it was already signed off on. It's been a parking lot for twelve plus years.
So the village
I know, I'm sorry, I know about the math and everything and the math actually works out to seven point five uh parking spaces according to the numbers that you just gave me because I studied all that as well. However, the drawing with it that is um that I submitted has six spaces. Because that's one of the ones that they had drawn up when they went for it. I don't, I need three. So I, you know, but it's easily six. I mean, I submitted one that they had submitted when they got it done. I'm, I, I don't know if I'm answering the right questions here.
Okay, Angela, the formula regarding the necessary parking spaces isn't based on how many spaces you or your tenants need. It's based, it's based on the square footage of the building compared to particular use. So you, the number of spaces required for a commercial use there likely to be different than the number of spaces required for retail. Now, it's entirely possible that your seven point five spaces is the correct number, but we need to know that exactly. And um, we can get you some help working with the village board, I mean, with the village, uh, the clerk to figure out what the not, the exact number of spaces is. How many do you have mapped off in in your diagram there currently?
Yeah, the, the one that I have here from them because they had three drawings. One had like eight, one had ten, one had six. So I submitted the one with six. Um,
Okay, but you have room for eight?
Well, uh, they had three drawings and according to the math that they had to do for it, it came out to seven point five. Um, at, at, but they had submitted or had drawn up one that had ten spaces, one that had eight, I think, and then this one was six. So I sent the one with the six.
Okay, well, what we need to know is exactly how many are required based on the square footage of the building. Uh, and 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 that an accurate picture of that that number of parking spaces plus an explanation of how that number was achieved needs to form part of these materials. Okay, now the village can help you pull that together, but we are going to need those numbers. So
So you're saying that the math that was used for the previous owners may be different for the ma, than the math as a retail store?
Correct.
Math, and who has that information?
That's in the code and if you go to the village clerk, they can, he can help you point you in the right direction in the code as to what the requirements are. If, and I'm just saying, if your property doesn't permit the number of spaces required, uh, there is a process where you can essentially, uh, there's a fee that can be paid where a, a, a spot can be waived, okay? But we have, we're not there yet. What we really need is an accurate count of what's required and a drawing of that number of spaces. Um, I, I do have a couple of questions on my own, of my own. One is uh, one is, i- i- is your parking lot that's a dog leg? Uh, it's not directly in behind the building. It's slightly
Yeah, so if you look at the um, the uh, I'm gonna show you. Can you see that?
Yes.
If you look at that sheet, it shows, so this is made. Alright, so this is a new street. So here's the parking lot. You enter from New Street and my, my property is attached to the front part that's on. So when you park, it's the whole walkway. That, you know, they're, they're attached to each other.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, but it's a slight dog leg and there's that connector piece, right?
I don't know what a dog leg is, but it's a
Dog. It's a, alright, I think I understand it now. Okay. Another question is presumably, did the buildings department not seal that this needed to be referred to the historic districts review, his district review board because there will presumably be exterior signage on the building um for your tenants and it is in, you noted in the historic district.
Right, um, as far, oh, you know, I don't know. Um, did I answer no to that? I, or was there a question in my, right, so I didn't see have any evidence of that happening, but my friends, my tenants, they know who to go through to do their signs for the store. In other words, they know the proper, um, because we went over that. And um, it's the, it's their signs and they already know the proper channels because they've had to do that already in the past. Um, so that's not, like, in other words, it's not my sign. So they can just get their own approval for their signs. Is that right?
Well, someone has to go through the process if the tenants are the applicant, the tenants are the applicant, or you as the owner can be the applicant. But I think it needs to be gone through. I'm just trying to
They, they, they are um, possibly already um may have already started that process. I just know that they, when I started to tell them, they were like, oh, we know all that. We're gonna go to the such and such. They, they, they knew what to do. So yes, I would have them do that on their own because I mean, I don't know. Uh, you know, it's their sign so they can work it out. They don't need a middle man that doesn't know anything about signs. That would be me.
Okay, but you're not planning any exterior changes, capital
No, I will not, I will not be doing any, any changes at all whatsoever. There, it's turnkey. It's all good. Um, they, they, they will handle their signs with the proper channels, you know, go through the proper channels.
Okay, and it's not going to be residential in any way, right?
No, not in any way. No, no, they both have their own homes. Some Bobby lives in Cold Spring now and Mary is in Poughkeepsie.
Okay.
No, no, no residential.
Okay, um, in, in cases of a change of views,
Uh huh.
In a, you're in the B one, you're in a business district, in the Main Street business district. We need to hold a public hearing
Uh huh.
to seek the comments of um, normally it's a three hundred foot radius of your neighbors about the change of views. Uh, and that notice of that public hearing needs to be published in local newspapers and a letter with a return receipt needs to be, yeah, uh, needs to be needs to be sent to the properties that are identified as being within that, that radius. Okay? Again, the village clerk can um help you through this process.
He can tell me who, which people I need to do the letter to. He'll be able
Yes, he can provide you with the, the, the names and the address.
Okay.
But we don't have a radius in the code yet, do we?
No, it's not in the code. I'm saying generally, it has been three hundred uh feet radius. It was certainly at um at
Right, but that's, but the notices should be decided by the board, not the clerk.
No, no, I understand that. All I'm saying is that usually in the past, it's been three hundred foot radius. All I'm saying is that the clerk can help. Once we decide, clerk can help her.
Oh, get the notice, get the notices out.
Get the notices out. Okay, um, what else? Um, I have something else there on my mind, Mary. So we, I'm sorry, I, I just, if we can fill her in a little bit on the process more. We need to publish, we need to set a date for that public hearing and we need to publish it within, is it five business days before the date we set. Okay, so the first meeting, we could possibly, the first day, we could possibly set for the public hearing would be August eleventh. If, if the timeframe for notice, notification for everybody uh can be met and if the materials can be prepared in time. I'm just giving you a sense of the
So as long as I can mail out the notices and get the um parking math questions answered with a drawing according to that.
Exactly.
Is that, yeah, I can do both because I'll go to the clerk. Oh, hi. I, I'll go to the clerk tomorrow um and, and address both of those things with him. I'm a mover and a shaker. I either do it or I don't. I don't, you know? Um, so I would love to do the August eleventh meeting just because my only concern is for my friends then to not be able to do business for a period of time in a lapse during the busy season. That would be bad for them because I'm fine, whatever works out for them, but I want, I don't want to lag on my end.
Okay, let me just sort of share with you that August eleventh, it, we already have scheduled for that meeting an extensive presentation on a, a project. And so it's going to be a, a long and crowded evening. Um, and I think we would need to think about
The following meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't, those, I don't think you do a public hearing on the Fjord Trail. I agree.
Yeah, so um, what is the next one after the eleven?
The twenty-eighth. I know all this stuff very hard now.
Okay, great. Okay, so I think we had better plan Okay, great, okay, so I think we had better plan on that as a date. And uh, that gives you a little bit more time uh, to pull the, the documents together. And um, now, I, I, I think um, the board does need to talk about. We also need to make a determination under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. As to whether this requires um, additional environmental review. Um, I would, my initial feeling is that it probably would not. Um, and um, we need to, the board needs to decide if it's agreeable. On setting the twenty eighth for the public hearing. What the uh, what, what's the term, Matt?
The, the, the declarat- the declaration, yeah, so I.
The bless.
Uh, yeah, I would say it's a type two exempt, I mean.
Yeah.
It, it used to be that things in historic districts had to go, but with the new seeker changes, you can actually exempt them now. They're not, just not changing anything, and this one's not, the parking lot is existing.
Yeah.
Um, so I would think it's type two exempt, I'm sure John would agree.
Okay, so um, all that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, I have a question about the letters that I send out. How do I know what exactly to say?
The, the, the notice has a specific form to it. That you can, and you can get that also from the village clerk, okay? It's a standard one, and you.
And then, yeah, sorry, the date.
You, you'll need to post a sign on the property as well.
Post a sign on the property?
Yeah, of the public hearing, and you can get um, guidance on that from the village as well. Uh, one last thing, I knew this was what, um, you will need to um, set up an escrow account. To cover the costs of any legal advice. That the village has to seek in carrying out this, in, in processing this application. Um, and there's a formula for that as well. And the um, the village clerk again is your source of best information on that.
And who do I set the escrow account up with? Does the clerk do it? Do they do it like they, I sign off and say that's fine, and I give them a check and they put it in the escrow?
Exactly.
I don't really have to go to my bank.
No.
So I need to do an S.
Okay.
They love me, they love me at my bank, alright, so I need to do an escrow account also.
Yeah.
With the village, um, and then on my letters, are, are we, my only concern, and I realize that it is what it is. Is um, you know, my only concern with having it on August twenty eighth is if, if. Is because of my friends, you know, um, lease and stuff, and they don't have a closing date. Because they're guaranteed through the end of August, okay? But that's a guarantee, but however, the um, closing date, if the closing isn't um. You know, for another couple of weeks after, the owners will let them stay a little longer, you know, but they can't if the closing date. You know what I mean, so there's no guarantee there. But you're saying that August twenty eighth is my date?
It's, it's actually August twenty fifth, that would be.
Oh.
A Thursday.
Okay.
Well, I was, I was wrong. Alright, so August twenty fifth, oh, that's better. August twenty fifth, so on my um, letters, I put August twenty fifth, we're set for that date. In other words, I wanna make sure before I write the letter, okay?
Okay. Alright, um, any other questions from the board members?
Straightforward, and then Jeff will tell you when you go to do the parking table, we have historically grandfathered one parking space. For Main Street applica- you know, for any Main Street business. Um, the, but I, I wasn't clear, the, the parking lot, you intend that for the employees, you're not directing?
The parking lot is only for the owners of the retail store, but they do have one employee. So it's the two owners of the store and one employee, usually there's no.
Right, but my, yeah, yeah, but my question is, you, the people that shop there, you're just expecting them to shop on the street, to park on the street, correct?
Right, just like they do now for their store.
Understood, I just wanna make sure, cuz we're.
By customers that walk by. Yeah, no, right, yeah, that would be a nightmare and that, that, yeah, no.
Yes, so the, the parking in the back isn't really part of the calculation then, really, I mean, you're not offering it for parking, um.
No, I'm just so, letting my friends, my tenants. Use that as their parking spaces, and then they walk right in the back door. In other words, they now have parking secured for their retail themselves, it's just to own a private parking.
That's, that's what I thought I was hearing, but it sounded like there was two different, two different peril, two different discussions that were going on about how that gets counted.
Oh, so I do or don't need to calculate it then?
Well, I don't know, I mean, what is the board thing, I kinda feel like, look, if, if the code says retail is one per one fifty, it has to assume a few shopkeepers, right? So it does seem that if you're gonna allow three people to park, that you should be able to get credit for that, well, how does the board feel? I mean, you're taking those people off of Main Street and on Lower Main, that's something that's really needed. Um, it's, you know, it's a lot worse than Upper Main, so it seems to me that it's, that it should be counted, you know, the, the ones that you're gonna allow to park there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, that you shouldn't have to buy waivers for it, because you're, you're, you're not, you're not asking for something in lieu of parking, you're actually providing. Dedicated parking, right, so. So, yeah, so just have Jeff know that you, I guess, whatever your, the tenants are, it's three people. You know, that you would say that you're, so the way the table works is, you, it's basically, the code says. One per one fifty for the first floor, one per three hundred for the upper floors. And then there's also a column that says what's required, right? So say there, it comes out to three, three and one, right? And then it's what you're offered, what you, what you propose, what you have. So I think onsite you would show that you have three onsite parking spaces, and then the rest, you're asking for waivers. Which shouldn't really be too, too painful, I mean, there are a lot of applications, I, the floor plates are quite small, right? You know, so it's um, I thought it was gonna be a lot more.
Um, right, right, it's not.
But you have that garden and the, yeah.
Fourteen hundred fifty about, you know what I mean?
Gotcha, okay.
But if those, uh, Matt, just to, just to fill in for me. If, i- if she were to permit um, customer parking back there as well. Um, that would lower the waiver count, would it not?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not doing that, that is a nightmare.
Okay.
Cuz it's not an appointment place. And people park on the upper and walk down to the lower and park on the lower and walk to the, I'm, I've been there. Free day for a month.
Okay.
And people just walk, it's a nightmare.
Okay.
That would be a nightmare.
Well.
Yeah, no, it's, it's private property.
Okay.
Private party, yeah, it's, it ain't worth it.
Get yourself a chain. Because.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Get yourself a chain to put across the entrance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Parking down there is just gonna get worse.
Yeah, yeah, and I haven't had any problems yet, um, but um, I do have a couple of. Like, private, no trespassing signs that I can put up if there is. But not one person has even tried to pull in there since I've been there.
Okay.
Which I, is kinda surprising, now my question is now, now that we've just re-discussed that. I'm not clear on what it is I am supposed to about the parking now.
Um, Karen, can I share a screen?
Sure, let me get you squared away here.
I'll just, and Jack, I can send this to you if you wanna send it to the applicant, retail.
Yeah, thank you.
Retail. So it's very simple, and Jeff, Jeff is familiar with this, you basically have, you're gonna do retail, which is, you know, probably say retail one. Retail two, two and three, right? So it seems to me that the project required spaces, if they're five hundred and, I think they're about five hundred and ten square feet each, the large floors.
I'm taking a picture of it while you talk.
Yeah, five, ten, yeah, so I think that's about three spaces. So i- in that case, you would say that, you know, whatever you calculate, right? You're gonna take your square footage divided by one fifty, so say that's three. On the first floor, you're actually providing the three, right? And then on these, say it's, you know, two, I think it's another three, and here you're providing nothing, right? So what you would need, sorry, that's supposed to just be just a, just a dash. So what you would need then is just three waivers, if this math is right, it's somewhere around there, I know you calculate seven, maybe the square footage is, is lesser on the sketches. Um, but you're right, to remove the circulation from the calculation of retail stair, stair throats. Cuz you must have a huge loss factor with the stair throat going up the one side, right? You don't count that, and I think you've already done that, I think you've just taken the active.
All the way over.
Yeah, yeah, so this is kind of the way you would do it, you'd basically just say, you've got you, for the first floor. You need three, you're providing three, you need three, you're providing, this just won't hold, same format, you're providing zero, right? So you have a deficit of three, if um, Main Street businesses have always been grandfathered one, one space. So then you'd need to buy waivers for two, this is all very rough math, you'll, you'll do the final math, but it's gonna be somewhere right around there. So it's not gonna be ugly at all, a waiver, a park, a waiver in lieu of parking, I think is either two fifty or two seventy five, I forget what they're currently charging for them. So you'd have two of those.
So I, I am going to the clerk and finding out what the retail numbers are. And seeing if my twenty five hundred square foot parking lot. Works out to the right amount of spaces according to the retail requirements. And then.
No, I, I know, unfortunately, no, that's not, because the parking lot, you're not really counting the square footage of the parking lot. What I'm saying is that, what I'm saying is that, since you're gonna use the three parking spaces for the staff, then you can get credit for those three. But the retail use, say the whole thing is sick, I think it calculates sick, you said you thought it was seven and a half, you gotta round up, so if it's eight. Um, but Jeff, Jeff will be able to.
I mean, I'm cool with saying it's six, just for the sake of the conversation, I'm not, you know what I mean?
Right. Yeah, so it would look, it would look just like this then, and then basically you have a deficit of three. Yeah, you get one, you get one grandfather that the board would just do in the resolution, and then you'd need to buy parking waivers for two, right? And the board makes the recommendation to the village board who grants, decides whether or not to grant the waivers. So, but it's all very straightforward, it's all, it's just all procedural, um, your use is, you know, is a short term, short trip use, which is what. The parking waivers were meant for in the B one, so there's no, there's no kind of misalignment, so. But Jeff will, Jeff will help, Jeff will help you walk through it.
Right, but what I meant by the square footage of the parking lot is that, that. I understand the amount of spaces is based on the square footage in the building. But the, the size of the spaces, you have to look at the size and laid out in the parking lot. Is why I keep referring to the size of the parking lot, in other words. The, the right size for the spaces, it, it, for, forget about the amount. That's required for the building. For the right amount of, of sizes for the spaces in the parking lot. And leaving the ten foot to back in and out, you know, scenario is locked in, it works out to seven point five. I realize that doesn't mean that's how many.
Okay, oh, oh, you're talking about the parking lot, okay, yeah, it's, yeah.
Two separate amount of numbers, but yet they kinda combined, I can't put ten in there. If I don't have the right square footage to still have the ten foot wide space where everybody backs out, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, the code, that's a, that'll be a code enforcement issue, I don't, I don't have any question that, even if you play parking lot, they don't, I don't. Hang on. Code enforcement can decide you parked and let you, since it's not an active parking lot for customers, might even let you play parking lot, right? Really just lock people in, that's entirely up to code enforcement, right? But if you're intending to let the tenants park there, it seems very clear you can fit at least three in there. So I, all we're saying is, square footage does not matter, that's a code enforcement issue. Um, that the only square footage that you're counting right now are the floor plates of where your retail tenant is gonna be using. Which seems to be five hundred and ten, five hundred and ten, and roughly two seventy two, when I did the rough math, so you're.
So you, you, when you do the rough math, how many altogether according to the measurements in the building?
Based on your sketches, the hand drawn sketches, it's, I, I come up with six, but that's very, very quick, that's very, very quick, it was slightly over six. So I guess you gotta round up, um, but it's, well, no, you gotta round, but it's so low, it would round down, uh, it's like six point oh nine or something. But anyway, Jeff, Jeff will walk you through all that.
Okay, so.
It's, it's straightforward.
Right, so it's probably six, um, which obviously, there's uh, room for. And then you're saying I should waive some of them if it doesn't work out right, the math?
Um, well, so there's, there's a mechanism in the code that will allow us to, the board to approve your application. Even though you can't provide that, all the parking onsite, right? And that, and that will get to, um, you know, once you, once you've calculated the required parking.
Okay, I, I do think, Andrew, the, the best, the best next step is for you to make contact with Jeff. And.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I understand, but I also am a little confused at the same time. Um, alright, so, and then you, um, um. So I'm gonna go there and get that sorted out and then be parking. The picture of the parking, um, with the six cars, I can, we can still use that. Probably just as a reference, or do I need to draw another one if I do these waivers and stuff?
No, I think, I think the drawing is, is fine, so long as you have the sufficient number, so long as you have the three. If it is confirmed, that's why I'm saying, the, 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 the next best step is to um, is, is to.
Go in and talk to him.
Go in and talk to him and get the, get the numbers down straight, and then, yeah.
And I only have one more question about that, cuz I get it, I need to go in, I, I, I get it, I'm kinda beating this one to death and.
Go ahead.
Um, my one question is, um, you said something about I have one built in, uh, also, like.
It, it's all, it's all the same question, Jeff will, Jeff will walk you through the calculations.
Alright, I'm gonna drop that then, and I'm just gonna go in, um, I thank you for your patience on that one.
Not at all, not at all, so um. If you will, if you will um, do that, we will keep in touch in terms of the progress. Of, of the application and of the public hearing. And um, work with you on, on making sure that the materials are complete, okay?
Alright, so I am notifying the neighbors.
Yeah.
I, I am working out the parking stuff. And I am opening an escrow account, those are my three jobs.
Those are your three jobs.
And you're gonna keep in touch and, um, and those are the three things I need to, to do. I don't need to submit anything else other than those things, correct?
And, and the, the, the papers that go along with them, okay? But again, you, in order to do that, you need to sit down with, with Jeff and. And get the math down, okay?
So when I get all the um, paperwork together that we just discussed for those three items. I, do I email that to you then?
Um, email me when, when you think that all of your materials are ready, okay? And then um, we will confer on that. And as I say, we'll continue to work with you to make sure that it's all in place, okay?
Okay, but I can, I can email you, I don't, um, that doesn't get done through, sent to you from Jeff now. I just send this right to you.
It can be either, it can be either way, I'm happy for you to email me and I'll keep in touch with you and with um, Jeff, okay?
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So I, I don't need to do anything else right now with you guys.
Nope.
It was very nice meeting. It was very nice meeting you, and thank you.
Nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, um.
Should I leave the meeting?
Yeah, you're more than welcome to say if you'd like to, but you may leave the meeting.
I don't need to, my dogs probably are ready to go out.
I know, I've, I've got one too, we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, they were patient, they hear me talking, bye, bye now.
Bye. Okay, can we stop sharing the screen on this, uh, now? Thanks, man. Okay, um, MJ, I'm sorry to keep you waiting again, but we had a, um, unexpected submission yesterday, um, that we need to take care of before we.
No worries.
Okay, so this is thirty-seven, uh, Chestnut Street. Uh, when I was, uh, down at the Village Hall on Tuesday, signing the minutes and, um, and other, other business unrelated to this, uh, in discussing uh, the, for, the minutes of the fourteen. In that folder was a parking table that had been submitted, been dropped off at the Village Hall on the fifteenth of July, which was the day after we approved project. Catherine did, and it had been decided somehow within that short period of time, the next day, that the parking spaces that we had approved, which were the ten parking spaces, uh, nose in at an angle along the wall of Food Town, the north wall of Food Town, and what we call the alleyway area, were no longer the designated parking spaces for uh, the dance studio, but that, the, the they had shifted to the eight parking spaces along nine D at the front of the parking lot, and two, uh, two more, um, moving that, moving, um, uh, west along the, the, uh, parking lot there. So all ten of the designated spaces would be at the front of the parking lot. Um, and I was certainly, and I know you all, were certainly unaware that this transaction had taken place, so.
What, what, what transaction actually took place? Because the applicant was, was in front of us, the applicant told us.
Yes.
In a lease that she had already executed. She told, she represented to this planning board that her ten were along the Food Town wall.
Well, in her, in her lease, she represented that there would be ten dedicated spaces.
But I, I watched, I watched the video again, and I listened to the evolution of her discussion about this, and it was a little all over the place, but I will tell you what she said clearly was that my designated ones were along Food Town, and I said, well, then there must have been a discussion about the tractor, because the tractor, the bike rack, and everything else are right in the middle of them.
Right.
You know, so then she went on to say, well, the tractor is needed for site safety, the site is, you know, very unsafe without it, and I'm like, well, then that doesn't follow then that your spaces go through it. So, but regardless, what the applicant represented to the planning board for approval, and we took final action, it's already done.
That's right.
So she, so she said that she had executed the lease and that her parking spaces were, that's where she said. Is anybody remember anything differently?
Well, I, yeah. I don't, I have to go back and listen to it in detail again. Um, I just think that the actual that the, that the instrument of, of, um, of identifying the spaces was in the site plan, was not in the lease itself. So I think the lease requires him to dedicate the ten spaces. I think the site plan, which we did approve, you're right, final approval. Uh, the site plan calls for those spaces to be the ten along the, the, the wall.
And, and, and when she did say that, we all, you know, I think, I certainly thought, I know Lara thought the same thing, is that, that's a great place for long trip parking, right? Because food, you know, main course and everything has the short trip parking up front. Those, those spaces right along nine D, for some reason, those eight are always parked. I don't know who parks there, but they're.
Yeah, well, probably long-term parking, that doesn't belong there, but in any case.
I don't know that, that, I don't know why that would be, but, um.
All right, but what we have before us is a request that we have received by email to amend the application.
There is no application, the family, the planning board took final action, the application is closed.
Well.
The, at, the applicant needs to submit a site plan that conforms to what the planning board agreed to, or she can fill it, she can put in a new application.
Well.
There is no, there is no mechanism to go back.
According to John, and I, I've spent a lot of time on the phone with him, and, okay, according to John, we can, in fact, amend the approval with this new site plan. There are no other changes other than the locations of the ten parking spots.
How, what does John say the mechanisms for that? What about the pub, what about the public input? We had, we took public input.
Wait, wait, let me get to that. We, we wouldn't have to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
On it, uh, and.
I would kind of agree with that. I don't love it, but I, I would kind of agree, but it's the same thing. You're basically saying it's a new application, it's an application to amend the amendment, you know?
What, what I'm saying is that I don't like, I don't know how the damn thing happened to tell you, you know, I have no idea. I have now had conversations with other tenants on the site, I have conversations with the property owner, um. I'm not sure that the communication among everybody on the site was, um, perfect. I, I can almost guarantee it wasn't. The fact remains that the only change that's being presented, that would be presented to us is to move the location of those ten dedicated parking spots. Um, and which appears to be a better common sense decision anyway. I don't know why the, the decision to move in, you know, to use the ten along the wall was ever made by them. I mean, they brought it to us, I know why we approved it, but, uh, so.
Well, but there's also the two, the, the, the fact that it's not ten, it's twenty, right? So the planning board has calculated. Let, let me finish. The planning board calculated that the use requires twenty. So if she has ten, I'm sorry, was that a no?
That was no. The twenty figure, the twenty figure was her occupancy. And based on the occupancy of twenty people in the place, we recommended that there would need to be ten dedicated parking spots.
Plus, plus ten. We had a long discussion about filling out the parking table and showing twenty. I wasn't at that meeting. I, I can certainly go and listen to it, but I am crystal clear on ours. Uh, the one that we had last week, we said the planning board had calculated the use at twenty. Right? She's getting ten dedicated in her lease, but if the full occupancy is twenty, I think that's why the planning board said twenty cars. Right? Could potentially show up and manage to the extreme. So my question is, uh, I suspect, um, knowing that site the way I do, that there is no intention to remove the tractor and the other sites will not be opened up, and the site will not be brought into conformance, right?
That, that's a separate issue as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I under.
Well, it, well, it isn't, if you, if you, you have to answer the question, where do the other ten go? Where do these other ten cars go when she's a full occupancy? Right? There's nowhere to go. The back's full, the alley with a planning board certainly can't suggest accessing, you know, the Food Town parking spaces.
There are.
The wrong way on a, on a one-way alley.
There, no, we can't. There are more than twenty spaces in the front of the lot.
I'm not sure what sort of magical thinking is bringing people to that number. I, I'm familiar with the lot. Um, all this, all the spaces, first of all, the, it, it's, what's challenging is the, the lines are gone, they've been gone for years.
Yes.
You can see, you can see shadows of them, but we can only go by the site plan. That's why, you know, everybody wants to talk about the five spaces in front of the interior designer. Those aren't even legal spaces, they were never approved. They're actually pretty difficult to get in, and when you look at it today, the interior designer has set up outdoor furniture in the parking spaces. You know, so there's a display about.
Time to time, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, we can only go by what's on the approved site plan, unless he wants to come in and modify the site plan. But we know that the site plan is woefully out of compliance, right? You can't use almost half of the parking. So when you look at, let me, let me just, I, I would like to kind of understand this, because I, I, I don't really understand where people are coming up with twenty in the front. Just look at the plan.
Can you share the plan? I've got it.
Yeah.
Because she sent us, uh, I sent you the one.
His is a little blurry, yeah.
Yeah.
So there are thirteen here. How in the world is anybody getting to twenty? There are thirteen here. These aren't here. There's a bike rack, there's barrels, there's, you know, and then the tractor. So in no sort of magical thinking are you getting to twenty. I'm not understanding why this board continues to say twenty, and frankly, why the chair is telling us twenty.
It's in the back.
What's that?
They were counting in the back of.
No, 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 they're saying in the front, in the very front, even if the tractor doesn't move, right? I don't, you can't get to twenty. First of all, to get to twenty, you're all the way back here. Right? But these spaces are gone. They put in a bike rack. They put in, well, then the tractor starts.
Well, they are.
So there, at, at most, there may be fourteen, uh, you know, I don't, I don't even think you can get to that, but it's really a lot closer to the thirteen.
There, there are no's in parking spaces, I was there today, um, east of the tractor, before you get to the tractor, okay?
There's a, there's probably one or two, right? Because then the bike rack is there.
Well, but there's, no, there are more than one or two. Um, there are, I believe, five of them there.
How, how could there be five? One, two, three, four, five would put you.
But no, there.
To the side entrance of main course.
You see where fourteen is.
Right.
There are, there's a one, where, whatever that triangle is right there. North of fourteen, I mean, east of fourteen. You see that marked triangle?
Yeah.
That's now a parking spot.
That can't be a parking space, because this car can't back out. That's why it's blocked off. That you, you have no, you have no turn radius. Well, so it can't be a parking space, that's, and again, doesn't matter.
It may.
What matters is the approved site plan, which is what we're looking at, that's signed off by the planning board. And I, as far as I know, this is the very last site plan. I couldn't find anything else, Jeff didn't either, so this is what we're talking about. So, you know, no different than you can't count these spaces, because they were never approved, and they're kind of very odd spaces. They're really right up against, um, they're very weird to get in and out of, but we can't count them anyway, they don't exist, right? With respect to the planning board.
Well.
So, it really is just the, the thirteen in the front. And again, so she, if she gets a full complement of, you know, she uses it as, as an event space, as a public gathering space, and she gets twenty people, where are they parking?
There's twenty cars, okay?
Twenty cars, yeah. My, my concern is, and we all know what will happen, they will park at Food Town, right? Food Town already is, it's impossible to park at Food Town. Um, Food Town was one of the first attempts at shared parking by reducing the parking requirement by twenty percent. It only works if, you know, there's a nightclub at one end and a grocery store at the other, and your business hours are so different that, yeah, why take up all that parking for, you know, for something that's never gonna be filled? But when everybody's pretty much a regular business hours, then it, you know, it, it's tough, and so and, and because there's no physical barrier, there's no reason to expect if he doesn't bring the site into conformance, that there's gonna be anywhere for twenty people to park, right? You know, maybe you'll get the thirteen here, um.
Yeah.
But.
Using this application to bring this entire site into conformance after so many years is not practical, I will tell you. It's just not practical.
And, and I, and I don't, that's not what I'm suggesting. It's the planning board's job, when they become aware of something, to take it to code enforcement. It's code enforcement's job to bring it in, but, but it, it is also our job to rectify mistakes, right? The planning board is not only allowed, but required, but by law, so I think that but it's, it's not her, it's not, it's not her responsibility. There's also no burden on her to make it happen. It will certainly be her challenge if he doesn't do that, and they don't have anywhere to park, right? Because what's going to happen, we all know, they'll park at Food Town, that's the only other place to park.
Okay, if, if I remember, um, correctly, if you look at the parking lots, twenty-five, twenty-six, and so on, she said um, they could park there. That's, I think that the, um.
Are any of those open? There is, the whole back is filled with, you know, it's a, a graveyard back there.
Yeah, but that was the, um, calculation or the total numbers of parking lots around there. Those were included when she said, um, those things can be used. That's, if I remember correctly. So generally, when we were looking at, um, to start with, when we were looking at the parking, um, my impression is the, the back is not usable, because everything is loaded there with all the old tractors and stuff.
Wait, 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 can we go back one, I'm sorry, continue, sir, but can we go back, all right, can we hold on there? Go ahead, Sue, go ahead.
On the, on the drawings, you can see twenty-five, twenty-six, et cetera, around there. So those were counted in as the official or the allowable parking.
The current, I think the current use, or these are for, um, the realtor in the back, Pat Sullivan. I think these two, these two curbs that you see here.
Pat Sullivan has one back.
Okay, um, well.
All right, but look.
Again, I, again, that's fine. I mean, if, if you're gonna, if we're gonna reopen it to a public hearing, we can discuss all this.
All right, but let's, all right, but let's look at this photograph now. Um, the three dots that you're seeing by the one isolated car there were, were planters. And they were removed, okay? But that is approximately the location of the tractor, approximately, okay? So, counting these now, the nose-in spots going in this direction, you have one, two, three, four, five.
Uh, not five, you gotta, this one has to, has to be able to back out.
Yeah, but you, I'm not counting the six, I'm counting five, one, two, three, four, five. And then you have the eight across the front, which is thirteen, you have, how many across the front here? Six? Six?
I thought there was eight.
All right, eight.
There's, I have a question.
You have the twenty.
Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but when I was doing the minutes, she was saying there was twenty in the front, meaning the eight across by the street.
Yes.
Then there were five, I think, in front of that building. See where you see those couple of cars?
Yeah, that ends at thirteen.
And then counting, uh, five more along that side.
We need seven. You, you're trying to get to thirteen to twenty.
Right.
Five only gets you to eighteen.
Right.
Right.
But she was calculating that it could, that there would be twenty spots in the front there. The twenty didn't include anything in the back. Um, now, whether, you know, whether that's, was realistic or not, it's not for me to say. But in the minute, she was saying twenty in the front.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but still, what we approved were ten along here.
And, no, no, we're not really, to be clear, we're not really approving the dedicated parking. She told us where it's gonna be located. We said, okay, great, so that needs to be shown on the site plan, right? We also, they also should just say, you know, whatever the business name is, right, reserved for. Because it was adjacent to a building that isn't owned by the landlord, we said, just put it, you know, do the, do the marking on the, on the pavement. Right? That, within you have some hope that when these, you know, when at least half of her place, you know, she gets a large twenty-person crowd, twenty-car crowd, that at least ten of them have dedicated, and it's taking some of the, you know, the, um, some of the impacts across the rest of the site. So, you know, so that's, that's. You know, so that's, that's what was approved. We're not really, what, what the planning board, what the planning board calculated in the prior meeting is that the use requires twenty spaces.
Right.
And so ten of them were to be dedicated and ten were to be shared. Right? Across the site. So, but the planning board isn't really approving her dedicated spots per se. We're really we're documenting what she, what the applicant told us where she's going to put them. The planning board can certainly have some, you know, some comment about that. It seems odd to me that if you have the long trip parking, I don't know why you'd want to congest the whole front of the space for, you know, for a long trip when really you know, the main course and main course is the one that needs short trip parking. So if she fills up the front, where in the world is main course? Where are their people parking when they go to pick up something at main course? Which is a fairly busy business, right?
I understand that, I understand that. But again, those kinds of speculations don't fall within our purview. What, what I'm trying.
House, I'm sorry, which, what not following, what doesn't?
You know, where, you know, where are main courses, you know, customers, you, short-term parking, going to find trying to spot.
Well, that's, that is what planning does, is to, is to have a sense of a plan.
We had no objections raised by, by main course for us to consider regarding this application.
That's because we approved a different site plan, right?
Yeah.
So my question is we can't sit here and spend this time speculating what the new site plan is going to be. We just need to now see the new site plan. Does it conform to the rules? You know, the, the code rules and all the stuff that we're trying to enforce. And to me, that's kind of it. But my, the other question I have is, we have two choices. We can suggest it that, that they go back and reapply and go through this process all over again. You're also saying that there's a, a way that we can just amend the parking table and then just vote, or I'm sorry, amend the site plan. And then vote to say, okay, great. Now it's this new site plan with your application. Please proceed. My only hesitation to do that is because we also have forty main, we also have other things that are going on. And that sets a precedence there. Well, if you did that for this group, why don't you do that for us? Because we have this issue with this tenant that needs to apothecary, blah, 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 right? So that is my only hesitation to go, oh, it's okay. We, we approved something completely different, but now we're getting ready to let you you know, just do a quick amendment and move on. So I do want to caution us with that.
I agree. I agree completely. I think that's, that's well said. And that's where, that's what I'm thinking too, is just that you're then setting a precedent that you don't have to conform with the site plan that the planning board took final action on. That's not something. Look, I get, I get that John can, you know, can kind of opine on the legal issues of these things. But what I always tell John is you don't have to sit in front of the applicants, right? We're the ones that, you know, that review the applications. And so I think that's a, that's a very reasonable compromise. And really, it's the same thing. You, you know, she's just, you know, it, 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 to do a public hearing, you have to have an application. You got to notice. So it's, it's the same thing anyway, right?
Okay, but this concerned me because honestly, I believe that the site plan that we approved did in fact show the location of those dedicated spots. Okay, if I understand you, Matt, correctly, the fact that the location of the ten dedicated spots has changed is not relevant in the sense of this application that we are still dealing with the same site plan. And, and the fact that the location of where her ten spots are, having moved is, is not relevant. And so in fact, she could go ahead with the approval that we have.
But I understood from what you just said, that she submitted a new site plan.
No, no. What she did was she submitted a document to the village which showed the location of the, of the ten dedicated spots in a different place from the ones that had been identified.
So that's a different site plan. Plus, we just heard that it's supposed to be, we're supposed to the site plan is supposed to give us indications that accommodates for twenty.
Wait, wait, again, please, I didn't.
I said, what I believe I just heard from, and what I read in the minutes is that we're supposed to see a site plan. We, we definitely approved a site plan that accommodated for the twenty. And now she has submitted what sounds like a new site plan, even though it's just stuff moved around, still a new site plan, right? But that only accounts for ten, is what
Yeah.
Your thing is now ten. The prior number was twenty. So I'm still kind of confused in terms of what's this new thing that she's sending? Does it, is it still trying to conform to the rules that was agreed to?
Yeah.
Per the minutes that, that, and I wasn't at that meeting. So I'm only going by the minutes. And what I believe was just reread to us. By Karen.
Okay, the answer is yes, that she is, is the same site plan. Twenty, ten dedicated, but the location of the ten dedicated is different from that which we were told. Okay.
And there was some discussion about that it making sense, I know it was between Lera and I, I don't, I don't remember if Sue was involved, that it kind of made sense to kind of park them over in kind of the, the alley to kind of calm that whole area, right? And also too, that they were long trip parking.
It's not making sense anymore, let me tell you.
Well.
Okay, well, that's what was discussed, right?
Yeah, my, my question there then, Jack, is if they do not designate those ten that they said assigned to her. Then, and then it's blocked again, then that means the whole parking is reduced. The number of parking is reduced by ten because that part is no longer used. It's no longer usable if they still park their tractor.
There was, you're right, Sue. There was discussion about that too, that, you know, that lining them all the way up along the Food Town wall forces site plan conformance.
Yeah, that's, that's why we said, okay, if you count twenty, let's just say we can park twenty cars. But now you cannot, because if they do not allow the diagonal, whatever, parking in that alleyway anymore. So the whole parking lot number is totally reduced.
Well, again, for the purposes of this application, our requirement, what the number we came to was twenty with ten dedicated spots.
Yeah.
That's still.
So, so you are clear on twenty now?
For the. Clear on twenty now, but but otherwise, anyway, I'm, I'm going to go back and check, but for this conversation, I'm clear on the twenty. And 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 we still have that, Sue. All right, there are still the twenty and there are still the ten, but the ten are in different places. Then we had, I thought that was, that was part of our approval.
All right, so, so basically, if, I think what you're saying is if the twenty, let's just assume the twenty, the whole number is still there. And exactly where is designated doesn't really matter.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's what you're saying, but I think, I, I think what I was looking at, I thought the with blocking this, the, the alleyways, the parking lot is reduced because those were no longer usable.
Well, no, no. And what Matt is saying is, is quite true that over the years, the, the site plan that was approved for this site has through, if nothing else, adverse possession of in, in practice considerably changed. According to the, the principles involved in that, those decisions were made for public safety. Okay, that the alley, that the connector through was a speedway, that there were nearly, you know, pedestrian accidents there, that it was being used in the wrong direction and.
And who, and who made and authorized this decision to increase public safety this way?
I, I don't think it was authorized in any official capacity. I think from, again, now piecing together the history of these decisions, which now that tractor was there when I moved here. So that is what, sixteen, seventeen years ago.
Yeah, we, we lost Judith, it looks like. Yeah, it was oddly enough, the last planning board you know, was concerned about the Dunkin' Donuts traffic cutting through there. I mean, the whole site is, I mean, when you look at these five parking spaces, they, this one, there, you cannot back or in or out of the space without being in the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. Right? These are not legal spaces because they are not safe. That is why you don't find them on the site plan. So the planning board can't turn a blind eye to this stuff. And.
I, I think we can work, you know, with code enforcement to try and bring this whole site into conformity with the plan. The question before us tonight is, I may have raised this unnecessarily. Thinking that we in fact, the site plan included the actual dedicated sites, their location. If it does not.
That is what, that's what the planning board agreed to, that they would be along that wall and they would be marked for the tenant. No different than the powers and horrors signs. You know, they say reserved, therefore you don't have people parking in them. So yes, the planning board, and it does need to be on the site plan. Because what if we get another applicant that says, oh, those ten are mine, right? We pull this one and say, those are already spoken for, right?
All right, but the question is, because earlier in the, in this discussion, you said, Matt, that you thought that the, the actual dedication of them that was merely advisory, that we had, we, we commented on it, but that the approval was for, to make sure that we had twenty available and.
You're, you're conflating two different things. The, the use requires twenty. The planning board, the only thing that the dedicated spaces do, in my opinion, is give you some assurance that there, that it might work, right? Because if, if, you know, if you have overflow from Food Town into here, and these are not dedicated and say reserved, right? Or the bank, right? If this were to be opened up, then there's less likelihood that the site plan will work. That is what we do, we kind of plan. So it, so we did say these should be marked as reserved in the business name, right? They just say reserve for move, right? That way then you know that those are not going to be taken up by overflow from Food Town or the bank or anybody else, right?
But does it matter to us?
And that's why, but that's why, but that's why you would show them on the site plan, right?
Does matter to us where they are because.
Absolutely.
Yes, it matters to where they are. I think what Matt was saying is, what we don't have a say in is what's in her lease about the dedicated.
Nor do we, nor do we want that, you know?
That is correct. That is correct. That is correct.
Look, and if, look, if she comes to us, here, here's, I guess Judith is still, is still there. I don't see her. Cause I just said she's not there and she texted me and said she is. So we can, she'll, she wants to talk about this as well, because she's a neighbor. Okay. But anyway, so, yeah, so I mean, you're basically, we need to file a document that just shows what, you know, and again, to Yaslin's point, no, we're not interfering with the lease negotiation or anything. But I will tell you, what we were told was that the lease was already executed and the parking exhibit was already done. Clearly that changed afterwards. I think it's changed because there may not be an intention to move that tractor ever. Just a speculation, doesn't matter. We don't, we don't make decisions based on that. That's a code enforcement issue.
That is, and that's, I'm trying to separate this out from that possibly.
But again, that's, that's the whole point of knowing where the dedicated ones are. And all the dedicated do is give us some hope, some assurance at predictability that this will actually work, right? Because at least you know that if, you know, if other people don't behave, right? That these spots are marked as reserved and they're shown on the site plan as marked as reserved. You know, I mean, everybody wants to, these powers and horror spaces are perfect examples. They have been reserved by a landlord to a tenant at one time at least. They're not legal parking spaces, right? So so if we had, so we need to always follow the site plan. The more information on the site plan, the better. That's why the board discussed at the last meeting. Mark them all, right? And we all, we had this conversation about, well, you can't you know, nail a sign onto Food Town or otherwise it would have to be upright. So just mark the pavement.
I, I, I know, but we're going over, we're going over old.
Old stuff that's being challenged is why we're going over it.
No, we're going over old issues. I brought this to us in, because I saw something needed to be corrected in, in, in the documentation that was attached to the, to this.
Right, okay.
Now, the question is, does it require a fully, a new application? And if it does, we need to let her know that. And that full application, all that will be needed different from what we currently have, is that the location of the dedicated spots be indicated on the site plan.
Yeah, I think to Yaslin's point, it should follow the proper process, right? Is that. But it's an application just for a minor site plan adjustment, right? Look, look, I mean, we'll hear what the public input is. I don't know why main course would be all that thrilled with, you know, all the parking in the front taken. That actually doesn't fit the full complement if it goes up to twenty, right? But, but they have, they will have the opportunity at a public hearing when that is discussed, right?
If they decide to attend it, you know.
But again, that's, that's not our problem. You could, we, we just lead the horse to water, right, with notices.
Listen, I understand that.
Right.
I'm just telling, I'm just trying to get a sense from the board of what it is. We need to tell this.
Well, you've heard from Yaslin, I just follow the, it's a, it's a simple, it's a simple one-pageer application. There's no seeker. It's basically just a minor site plan adjustment.
Okay, and that, this is what I'm saying. So on that site plan adjustment, it will be the proposed location of these ten dedicated spots.
Yeah, so what she has based on, we haven't seen her resolution, but what that resolution would say is that these ten spots run along the, you know, the southern boundary, you know, and they, they take all but one in the row of eleven.
That is actually, that is actually indicated on this, on the parking plan that she dropped, that she submitted to the village on the fifteenth of, of July. So she needs to turn that into a simple application to modify the site plan according to that document.
Yeah, it's just a minor site plan adjustment. And then there's a public hearing. Right, you, the, the planning board is at discretion as to whether or not you need a public hearing for a minor site plan adjustment. I don't think this is, while from a paper perspective and a record-keeping perspective, it's minor, it is not minor to the public. Right? So I would say that you have to have a public hearing.
I, I was told again by John that we can't, we can't weigh anything in terms of a, an application in the B one or B two district. That's what he said to me. And that's why I was planning and told the applicant that it would require
Okay.
A public hearing.
Okay.
We're going to do it. All right. She is out of the country.
Oh.
Okay. I'm trying to, I, I, I will tell you, I am trying to get this in, in this month because, you know, there is work underway and there, listen. And and I will tell you what, whatever information she was receiving from the owner, from whatever was a, because I received it today, was an ever-changing kind of response to her, to, I'm sure the question she was asking. That being said, I would like us to move forward with this to correct it as expeditiously as possible.
Well, I, I would not call it a correction. She wants a change to her site plan. She's going to apply for a change. The, the planning board will process her change in the normal fashion, will take public input and then decide, right? Correct, correct assumes there's an error. There is no error.
Well, there is as far as I'm concerned in that the site plan that we were, that we had approved was not the site plan that was, that was adopted in practice. So to me, that's an error. The site plan that was that was adopted in practice. So to me, that's an error.
Well, that well, then that would be her correction. It wouldn't be in front of us.
Well, that's what I mean. That's what.
Right? Yeah, and that happens all the time where it's just like, you know, you know, especially Butterfield, I was doing the final site plant in Butterfield. No, you're missing the signage. No, you're missing, you're missing numbers. Yeah, you know, so it's not unusual that you have to send the site plan back to the applicant and say, no, you need to show this here, show this over there. But that, yeah, so the correction that you're talking about is at this point on her side, she has an approved site plan. Absent the resolution and you signing it.
Yes.
The problem is she's not providing you a site plan that conforms with the resolution.
Matt, 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 we have been there. We we understand now, I believe. What the situation is. I'm wondering how we can, if we can. Schedule this through to be accomplished in the month of August.
When when is she coming back? And the eleventh is booked. So now it's twenty fifth. So twenty fifth, we have number eleven Main Street. And we can get the Chestnut people in there too, if we have.
Right.
So that's the fastest we could do, no matter what.
Okay. Let me find out when she's returning. Okay, again, this. Happened yesterday, Tuesday. And it took me a day to get a hold of John first. And in the meantime, I've been having discussions with her and I. I did tell her that it was my view that she had to. Come back through to the planning board again, and that we would have to hold a public hearing.
I think that's the proper way, you know, instead of jumping to say, oh, okay, you can, and then other people.
Matt, Matt gave me, Matt gave me an earlier ray of hope when he said. Something and I'll check through the minutes on this one. When he said something about the fact that the actual locations of these sites may not. Actually have been part of the approval, the existence of them.
I I don't know if I said that. I didn't mean to even suggest that because that's not we like us. Again, we talked about marking the pavement. We talked about.
No, I know that. I know that. I know that. But nevertheless.
I I don't understand what I I I'm not following what that means. We're talking about marking the pavement anywhere? No, we talked about a location. We were, it was quite clear. It's all videotaped.
Yeah, no, but but if, but that's right. I'm just talking about the conversation we've had tonight. And you can mark the pavement anywhere. I mean, you can put move. Along the the spots along the, you know, the a nine D for those spaces. What we said was there has to be ten dedicated spots. They have to be clearly delineated. And it was our understanding that they were going to be those ten spots nose in along the wall.
And our understanding leads to a resolution of approval and that's done. So I'm not quite sure. Why we keep kind of trying to move that? You know, we, you know.
We're not. We're not.
Okay.
You know, we agree that she's just gonna do the new.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, I think.
A new application?
No, 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 simple site plan adjustment.
Right, right, okay.
Brand new application.
Okay, the adjustment submit and then we have a public hearing.
Yeah, because let's, yeah, because let's understand her change of use was approved. Right? The ten designated spaces along the food time is approved. She has a, she has an approved site plan. She can get a building permit and do all of her construction. None of this will affect her building permit.
Right.
Right, right? But this board, and more importantly than this board, the village needs an accurate record of what a tenant is doing. No different than, like I said, you know, the hours in par, you know, the powers and horror spaces show up. They're not even legal, right? So that's why you want to get as much onto a site plan as you can, including the location of the designated spaces.
By the way, they are now designated for the antique place.
Well, they can't. Well, again, Jack, to my point, they are not legal spaces. They are incredibly dangerous spaces. One of them, I think, has a, you know, has outdoor furniture in it. So if it is in fact a parking space, it shouldn't have furniture in it. Not an issue with the planning board because it's not a legal space. It's not identified as a space.
Fine, all I'm telling, all I'm saying is it no longer says power and horror, now it says the antique space.
Oh, they did change them? Why? Because of our hearing?
I have no idea.
I think a lot of people watched that hearing.
I'm just bringing you up to date.
Yeah, how funny.
On the current status of that site, which I will never cross again.
But when you, but when you go to do. When you work with the code enforcement officer to enforce it, those spikes, those spots are gone. They're gone.
Or there's an amended site plan and they're approved.
One or the other.
So we we schedule a public hearing more likely for the August twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Twenty fifth, yeah, that's a, that's the only time available. The eleventh is out completely. So. The earliest we can do is August twenty eighth.
Twenty fifth.
We're all looking at, we're all looking at.
Looking at the wrong calendar, twenty fifth, okay.
Okay, all right, fine, understood, agreed upon. Will be acted upon. Thank you, MJ, for your patience.
We, I'm sorry, Jack, do we need to? On both of these properties, eleven Main and thirty seven Chestnut, do a motion for the public hearings?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, you do need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, right, so.
Can I have a motion to schedule a public hearing on eleven Main? For August, our meeting of August twenty fifth, please?
So move.
Second, please.
A second.
Okay, thank you, Yaslin. All in favor?
I.
Unanimous. May I have a motion, please, to schedule a public hearing on thirty seven Chestnut? For our meeting of August twenty fifth?
Yep, I'll I'll raise the.
Thank you. Thank you, Yaslin. And gonna have a second, please?
My second.
Thank you, Matt. Could I have a vote, please?
I.
I I it's unanimous.
And and Jack, are we doing the seeker tonight on eleven Main Street or will we wait? Until the. The public hearing. I I don't know how you want to do that.
Why don't we do it? Can we do it tonight? We can do it tonight, right?
Does she need, does she need to provide the?
Yeah, we don't have the form.
We don't have the EAF yet, so let's pass on that, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, MJ. Turning to our. Presentation on August eleventh. By the Hudson Highland Fjord. Everyone knows MJ Martin, yes. I believe he was the director of outreach and communications for SecRec.
Close.
Close.
Development and community engagement.
Uh, community engagement. For the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail and as. Just to re recount, we had mutually agreed to. In order to make the presentation on August eleventh to the planning board as useful as possible and because. All of the board members. I believe I'm correct. Some of us. Several times have seen the full presentation. That that has some, that the Fjord Trail has been making various other places. And in order to make the meeting as useful as possible. That we would send to the Fjord Trail in advance. The series, a series of questions that we would. Hope help target them, the presentation in to deal. More specifically with the issues that are related to the community. The planning board's responsibility. So. Yasmin was kind enough to take on the role of. Consolidating all of the questions that were sent in by individuals. And. Had creating five different topics. Under which these questions. Fall. The draft of that was sent out to the planning board before its last meeting. And it was agreed upon that this, the these preceding past two weeks. Would be spent in reviewing that and submitting. Comments to Yaslin. Not doing official business on it, but submitting them to Yaslin and that a final. Version of the questions would be. Discuss tonight. In the meantime. She and I on Monday, this past Monday. Were to try and simplify the previous document grammatically more than anything else, an organization. Not adding or significantly changing the content of the questions, but I did send that. Revised document to everyone with the agenda which was posted and the document was posted. On Tuesday. I believe. So that is the document that is that everyone has received in that which is is under discussion. Tonight, and if. People are satisfied with the document, I have scheduled a time for John first to take a look at it tomorrow. And then it would be sent to Fjord Trail tomorrow. Twelve hours short of the twenty four hours, but never of the of the two weeks. And a copy sent to the village trustees. In the meantime, I don't know if any of you were on the village meeting last night. I was not, I couldn't be. But there was a discussion, were you there, MJ? Okay. There was a discussion last night by the trustees regarding a traffic study. That has been commissioned. By the Fjord Trail. By consultants. And. It was apparently a very. Thorough discussion on the issues that were being raised by. The preliminary sort of scoping document. That the consultants had shared with the committee of the trustees who have been assigned to liaise on this particular issue. And.
They're part of a larger working group. There are three members of the Board of Trustees. That are a larger working group that encompasses members of the DOT. Parks staff. County representatives and members or representatives of each of the other municipalities.
Okay.
Spring Village has three representatives on that.
Okay, and I I know Laura Batsi is one and and.
Eliza.
Eliza. Okay, so today at four thirty. And I will admit to my not reading it until five thirty. I received a quite extensive email from Kathleen. Describing this, the process, the the discussions, summary discussions of the. Trustees regarding this issue that took place last night. A short description of the sort of administrative process that MJ just laid out for you that. The the trustees being part of a larger study group on this subject. A timeframe perspective, proposed timeframe. For this study to. Take place, which take place. And a series of concerns that the trustees have expressed. About all of those issues, scope, timeframe. And. Then referring that matter to us. And asking for our advice and comments. On that issue. Now. Sensible as I was that this referral might be coming to us. We included in the revised document that you all questioned, you all received questions, general fans. Regarding. The. Transportation study. And its potential impact on those areas of our concern. So. Having read it, I'm sure. List of questions, you will see that there are several in there which cite this. Study from from our perspective, but we now have been formally asked by the trustees. To participate and provide them on an ongoing basis with our counsel and advice on issues. And so. I haven't responded to that email and I did not send it around because I I think. We all need more time to look at it and to consider it. But there is nothing in the questions that we have already prepared. That is inconsistent with that request. And. Or counter to the concerns that were that Kathleen expressed to me. In this email, this afternoon's email. I had, I had. Let Kathleen know as a matter of course, what our timeframe was in terms of our development of these questions. The cooperation that we had received. From the Fjord Trail. When. You know, our schedule of agreement on what the questions would be and our need to. Honor the agreement that we had to provide them two weeks. Ahead of our of our meeting. And so I. Doubt that she would reasonably expect us to respond in any. Concrete fashion in terms of this set of questions to that email. It just. We would have needed them last week. Her concern, the summary of the of the trust's concerns, so. Long winded, but. Are there any further comments or questions regarding the. Document that Yaslin and I revised and circulated, we revised on Monday again. More in terms of simplicity and. Consistency of form.
Oh, I think it's great. And Yaslin, you weren't here at the last one. Thank you so much for all the effort you put in. It was really a lot of work. Well done.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Agreed.
Sue, are you comfortable with the document?
Yes.
Okay. I think, MK, the best thing to do is. I mean, you can go online, it's posted, you know, all of our documents are public. And it, we we posted it. With. It should be posted with the agenda. If not. You will be receiving a copy of it tomorrow.
I didn't notice it with the agenda because I just downloaded the agenda today.
You did, okay. I.
Maybe it's there and I missed it, Jack, but.
Okay, I I make certain assumptions that. If it's a public document that's being discussed. Should be up there, but those are my assumptions maybe. In any event. You will be receiving it tomorrow. There are five topics under which our questions are organized and. Each of those topics, there's a short explanation of. Why those topics are important to the planning board in terms of its mandate. So that it makes it, so there's a rationale behind what. It is that is particularly of concern to us and. Why we feel that it's important for us to ask the questions. I'm not sure. It's my feeling that perhaps some of the questions go beyond, perhaps. Your scope, I don't know. There's no criticism in that. Some of them have to do with. Environmental review, but we thought it was important. For you to have a complete sense of the scope of our concerns. For the presentation on the eleven and as we go forward. Discussing this. For the presentation on the eleven, and as we go forward, discussing this project. Because obviously it's going to be a continuing. A continuing process, if you have, or if anyone has any questions. About any of the meaning of the questions, if we've not been clear. Please feel free to contact me. And, and, or Yaslin, either one of us can't explain what it is that we are concerned about or thinking of. I think that it should all make a kind of sense because of the context in which the questions are listed. I, I don't think we need. A formal answer back of, of what you feel you can answer, or on, on August eleven, or, or.
We, we'll answer to the best of our ability, whatever questions, I mean, you know, we're, we're interested in, in providing the information that you need.
Okay.
To the best of our ability, well, I also, in, in interest, I mean, in relationship to what you just said. Jack, about the environmental review and kind of some things may be out of our, of our purview. As the sponsoring agency for this project, we are not the lead agency, obviously, we're not an agency. For, for the environmental review, so we've actually reached out to New York State Parks. And, and have asked for a representative from Parks to attend on August eleventh as well.
Well, thank you, that, that's a help.
So that, you know, there, there will be things that we can't answer, because we are not what lead agency on this, you know, we're not, it's not our process.
Okay, that, that's very helpful.
Feel free to share that document with them if you need to, in order to prepare.
Thank you.
You know, and I'd also say, like, if there's stuff you know you can't answer and you won't be able to get to, if you can just indicate to us. Who we need to contact, if you're not able to bring them to the table on that day, just so that we know, you know, in our follow-up.
Sure, absolutely, happy to do so.
Okay, one of the questions you'll see does relate to, I, I think it's in the first topic, Yasmin, isn't it? You know, what your responsibility as a project sponsor is. So that we can begin to put the sort of mosaic together, the, the. Flowchart of who will be doing what as this thing develops, as the project develops. So that's an important, I think that's an important. Thing that you will be able to deal with and will help this issue of. Our understanding of who, you know, who has authority for what issues, so. If, if that's then satisfactory to everyone. I'll proceed to send the document to John tomorrow. And he has promised to, he has been underwater, obviously, some of it has been our water. And. I'll send it to him tomorrow, and barring any sort of major something, I'll, I'll, I'll email it to you tomorrow afternoon, probably, okay?
Thank you, Jack, to clarify, on, on the, the email that Kathleen sent you.
Yes.
Regarding the parking and transit study.
Yes.
Although you, you, I just want to, I want to confirm, you are, you and Yaslin and, and the rest of the board. Have already added some questions about that, you needed some clarification on that as well, or?
Yeah, we added some.
Or that different information that we'll need to prepare for that joint meeting, I, I'm just.
I, I felt it was important. To, for the questions, to at least reference the fact that there was study that was, that was underway. Again. They are fairly general in terms of the scope and timing and things like that. They are not detailed questions that would need to be answered at this point by the, by the consultants on it. But now having received a referral and a request, you know, a referral for our comments from the board, from the trustees. Is a formal. Is a formal action on their part, and so we will. Need to familiarize ourselves in greater detail with the, what the scope of the study is. It may be that that conversation will take place during our joint board meeting in September, early in September. I just, I honestly don't know what the timing is for that, and I don't actually know. And one of the questions is what's the timing for the, for the traffic study? So.
Traffic study is, is, is underway now, and it's set to wrap up at the end of the year.
At the end of the year, okay, so, so it is, I would say it is likely that. That will form part of the discussion of the joint trustee planning.
Okay, just if there were some burning questions that needed to be.
I don't, I don't.
Happy to frontload that.
Yeah, no, thank you, and you'll see, you'll see the approach we take to the questions. Regarding the traffic study, which should give you some, you know, basis for. Filling us in on things, but there just wasn't time receiving that referral this afternoon. To, you know, but give it the attention that, that it obviously.
And this is an ongoing process, this isn't the last time that we're going to have questions and, and chat. So I'm, I'm excited about what we have in front of you, it's pretty substantial already, I think, so I think that's enough. For now, you know, at least until we start to get some more information, so thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so.
We'll, we'll answer as much as we can, and we've got, you know, we've got ten business days to, to get this, to get this together. So we're gonna, we're gonna do our best, and of course, if you ever have follow-up questions.
Yeah.
You know where to find me.
Absolutely, and the other thing I'd say, if you, as you guys start looking at it, and you're trying to figure out, well, what's the format, the best format to respond? If you want to ask us, feel, you know, feel free.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, I, I was looking at it the other day, it can go any direction, like how you decide to respond, you know what I mean, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, MJ, for joining us and for sitting through our fascinating discussions. And.
The board, you're doing your job.
And I will proceed. With the, with taking care of, doing what we need to do with the questions, and. Is there any new business?
One thing, actually, I think since there's been so much lack of clarity on this thirty seven Chestnut resolution. The board should, normally what would happen is that, you know, the attorney would be there, and the resolution would provide it in advance, and the board would review it. The board authorizes the chair to sign the resolution upon reviewing it, so I think that because we, you know, we had so many disconnects. With respect to the number of parking for the use, whether or not the spaces are identified, I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be in that resolution. So I think what obviously has to happen is the resolution needs to come back to the board, the board needs to review it and authorize the chair to sign it.
Okay. Yeah, I discussed it, John, he, he's, okay, yeah.
Right, because obviously you want to get that done, so then she's got a, she's got a legal site plan, she can continue working. Nothing in this change is going to really change her use in any way, she, once the resolution is correct, reviewed and executed. She's got, you know, she's got a change of use, she has her change of use, it's basically just housekeeping now. But that housekeeping is important, especially with the way these discussions were kind of zigging and zagging tonight. Okay, okay.
All right, thank you all. If there's no objection, then may I have a.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Karen, are you trying to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Jack, I'm sorry, I, I probably could have called you tomorrow. But the, the HHFT document that you sent, was that the final one? That you.
It, it, it is.
Posted if it wasn't the final one. With any other questions or comments, do you want me to put that on the website?
No, thank you, not yet, because it has to be reviewed by John First tomorrow.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I thought, so I didn't want to put it up for public view if it wasn't.
Okay, I, again, and, you know, it's past practice for me. That if a document's going to be discussed in public, even as a draft. You know, that it, that it should be up for the public to see, but it, 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 I'm, I'm quite sure it's. It's not that important an issue, and, and John will take a look at it tomorrow, and we will go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who was on that?
Matt made a motion.
That.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, okay, may I have a second, please?
My second.
Thank you, and all in favor?
All right.
All right, good night.
Night, night off, thanks again, bye.
Bye.
Good night, Sue.
Good night, Karen. You can cut me off.